...to order, salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will call the members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Chomley.
Yeah.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Chomley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
We need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of January 12th. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Red red.
I'll make a motion to approve a meeting that says red, January 12th.
Second.
Third.
Are there any additions or corrections? Not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion is carried. I think the budget meetings, I'd like to group them all together as three. I don't think we took any action at any of them, did we? I don't believe. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the all three budget meetings.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Is there any additions or corrections to the budget meeting minutes? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Name and answer it through. Now the report from Mike Pedro, Coast Office.
Well, it's been a fairly quiet month here with the snow and cold and everything, but a couple of changes up at the shopping center. Pizza Plus is moving down to the far end of the plaza where the former Chinese restaurant was and where the Family Dollar store was. That's going to be a larger Chinese restaurant type operation. So what's going to happen with where Pizza Plus is now, I'm not sure. There's different options. Talked with Mr. Parkdale's office. Sent a couple of letters out for code stuff. One of them in particular is the house on 93 Oak Street, that vacant shell up there. Person did apply for a building permit, but we're writing back and forth. I need more documentation from him. I got stamp plans for that project. So we're in the works at that. The other person there obviously complying with what I had written in my report there. It started with cold vibrations, so other than that, it's been quiet.
Is there someone in there, residents?
There was, but I believe they've since moved out.
The one with the...
You're talking about Oak Street?
No, 16 Seaver.
No, there was someone in there. They actually, they originated the complaint and I went and did my thing. Sent the owner's a letter, but it's a property. That's all through a land contract, so you got to go through them, through the own people. There was some court action involved with different people, so it's a tangled mess.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? If not, I'll proceed with my report. On the state funding front, it is not final yet, but we're looking at a reduction in our CHIPS money this year from 24,000 to 15,000. A reduction of 37.32 percent. I'm hoping they relent on that, but I guess that's going to affect everybody. That's quite a lot of money to be decreased, but anyway, it looks like that may be where it ends up. We're going to have two public hearings, Wednesday, February 11th. One regarding a use change at the former, for the former Champlain Elementary School and one regarding approval to include a repair shop at Bruce Leclerc Auto Sales. So if anyone is interested in either of those issues, they should attend the zoning board meeting Wednesday, February 11th. What time is that, Don?
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock.
Mayor, the public hearing for the school is not for change, to change the use. It's for Mr. Dumisil's application. Change of use is something entirely different. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that's what I had in my notice.
He's only changing...
He needed a use variance to improve what he was doing. But to change the use altogether or change the zoning, is that what you're referring to? We haven't gotten that far yet.
No, it's for the hearing. I wanted to remind people that there was going to be a hearing this week.
Oh, the public hearing for what Mr. Dumisil...
Right, that's what I said. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it wasn't just if anybody had any input, that wouldn't be the time to go. Also on a cheerful front, NICEAG is petitioning for electricity and gas delivery rate increases of 9.9 percent for electricity delivery and 8.8 percent for gas delivery. So, you know, if anybody had any input on that, they might want to call NICEAG and let them know or the power authority because that's who they're petitioning. Just to alert everybody to that fact, that's, you know, all NICEAG customers, not just Champlain. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Terry Linkort on having had his grade D water certification renewed. Congratulations, Terry. And that's all I had. So, Trustee Chomley?
The only thing I have is that I will be attending the zoning board meeting on Wednesday night and, as you said, there's two items on the agenda.
Thank you, Kim. Trustee Martin?
It's been a busy month with shared services and other issues pertaining to the village. I'm going to defer my report on the shared services issues to Tom. I'll let him be the bearer of bad news here. So, things are moving forward. We're looking forward to the engineering firm coming in and getting started as soon as possible, and I think some good things are going to come from this side. But that's it.
That's good. It's a good report after mine. Trustee Chomley?
Okay. It's not all bad news, as bad as it sounds. First of all, I'd like to mention I noticed the signed Ian for the skating rink. It looks nice. I want to make sure, bring attention to that. Was impressed, that's good. As far as shared services, we met with Barton LeJudas and primarily to review details of the contract to, that they're going to put together, they're going to draft to, for the agreement for this work. And it was primarily to ensure that there was complete understanding of what the primary objectives were from this committee. So hopefully that'll save time. It was more or less like getting a draft meeting up ahead, so when the contract gets laid out, hopefully it's a quick review. And within that meeting, we talked about billing and how we're going to handle billing. And I guess we got to bring up a new business, but as we initially had talked about, there was going to need to be $30,000 of seed money or working funds, let's call it. And we've already, I guess it was last year, requested 5,000 from each board. We're going to need additional 5,000 in order to have enough funds to pay the bills while we wait for the reimbursement from the state. That's the way it's going to work. We'll get a monthly bill from the engineer, turn the bill into the state, wait for reimbursement. So we need some additional funding for that seed money. So we'll bring it up in our new business, I guess, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's all I have. Like Greg said, it's moving forward and it's good stuff. Let's hope we keep the ball rolling.
That's Mr. Pedro's leadership.
Yep, exactly.
So if I, I take it Tom, so we're progressing towards securing someone to do the study? Is that where we're at right now?
Yes, exactly.
Trying to identify someone?
We've chosen, well, we've identified the engineering firm, which is Barton LeJudas. And they're drafting the contracts so we can secure the agreement so they can start work.
Okay, so we're getting closer?
Yeah, we're very close. We're hoping work can start soon, in the next couple of months.
Good. Thanks, Don. Trustee Garrett?
We had another quan meeting last week and unfortunately, they moved it to a date I was not able to attend. We still have no takers on doing parade, so I don't know if that event will take place Memorial Day weekend or not. We are looking for someone to assist with a village resident who's willing to help but not take it on all by themselves. So if anyone's interested in helping put the parade together, it will be a celebration of Samuel D. Champlain's travels through the area. And it would be nice, it's a nice kickoff to our events. But they did not put the meeting, minutes out on the meeting yet, so I don't know what else they discuss. I just know that we're still looking for that. We are looking to, at the mass, have some French songs, so it kind of pulls in the whole thing. But everything's progressing and moving along and that's it.
Yeah, just want to let you know, Amy, the budget meeting that you asked me, you did put a little bit of extra funds aside, you know, if we can get somebody to work with the parade, we're, you know, we're going to jump on it. We'll grab some funds.
I'm trying. I'm doing my best begging.
And it's hard to get some...
Working so fast.
That's a big job. Hey, thanks, Amy. At this point, I have a report from the Court Treasurer.
Everyone's been copied with the January expense and revenue reports.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to do a purchase requisition we have for a controller for motor heater on the Dodge van of $65. Motion to do that, pay that bill?
Make a motion.
We have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried. At this time, I'd like to present the warrant and payment. Is there something to be added?
Yep, we have one bill to be added to reimburse the town of Champlain for $2,586.88 as a sewer credit for GLC fur dressers. It's to come out of G 8130.4. These bill of error.
258688.
258688, yep.
Okay, we heard what he was copied on that.
Okay, and we also have one more. It's two, we received a bill to pay for the front end motor. The amount is $98,038. And for this one, we've received our bond, money for $48,038, but we need a motion to transfer funds out of fund balances to cover the $50,000 that the village is going to pay upfront.
To transfer funds, fund balances, okay.
Yeah. Out of A, 599, $35,000. Out of F, 599, $5,000. And G, 599, $10,000.
Okay, is that all the changes?
Yes.
Okay, would entertain a motion to pay the warrant and do these changes? All right, Greg, motion and second?
Oh, second and motion.
Second. Tom?
The approval, aren't we?
Okay, any discussion? I mean, warrant arguments?
Yeah, the Champlain Peterbilt, we started to discuss that beforehand. Do you know why they use synthetic oil in that one oil change?
And that's what the manufacturer's recommendations are for that vehicle. That's why you can go 7,500 miles for an oil change. And that's right out of the owner's manual written document. We actually did it 1,000 miles prematurely, I guess. We did it prematurely. You did it at 6,500 instead of 7,500.
And we're not able to do an oil change on a truck?
The truck was already at Peterbilt, getting the system installed, so we just had to service the whole truck. It was just first service.
Is that one, that one new truck, they charged $127.50 for an oil change?
The new Ford.
Can you, would it be possible to check them and see if they have a flat rate available for the services that's involved?
Yes, I'll...
Instead of an unlimited rate?
I'll check into that. I don't, I didn't realize it was that high. If I had known prior to that, I would have taken it down before we were shipped.
And this is for how many GPSs? One or two? Are all of them on here?
Yes, they should be on there.
They are. Well, they're not up and running, so I hate to pay for something that isn't even working yet. You said they were going back in last Monday and Wednesday? Did that happen?
We just got the Peterbilt for the International Plow back today.
And that's still not showing any activity?
They put it in windshield. I can't get any, there's a portion of the unit that has to face the sky. There's a little sticker that tells that's what you have to do. And it's actually mounted on the dash and the sticker and on the windshield.
But nobody called Jet Trac? I gave you the phone number, they've received no phone calls as of 5:00 tonight.
Okay.
So that they can assist with it? I mean, we're paying for the system that's not working. We're paying for an installation that isn't working.
I'll check into that. I don't, I didn't go on and check to see if it was tracking. So tomorrow, call Jet Trac.
Get any further discussion? Under the warrant? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried. Approve the warrant.
We're going to pay this even though stuff isn't fixed on it?
Oh, we should follow up on that. I haven't had a chance to study on it, but I'm sure, it sounds like we have an issue there and we need to look into it.
Yeah.
Make sure that we get what we think for it. Yes, I agree.
Couple details to check on.
Okay, Heather, report of the superintendent?
Last week, I had a meeting with the mayor, earth science engineering, and DOT, Department of Investigation folks, in regards to water line across the bridge. We've formulated a plan for the demolition of that line, to have it removed before we have a nice jam that's damaged further or has other damage to the bridge or to the NICE A1. So, we had a schedule for this week to have that done this Wednesday, but the equipment availability will be pushed for another week, so not next week, but the following week we'll have DOT assist us with removal of that one. This week, we're going to do a new lift station. Not a new lift station, but we're going to, weather permitting. We've been waiting for a break in the weather and Woody, and we'll assist him, and we're going to go down there and put another pump that we purchased last year in the lift station on Main Street, so we don't have any potential problems with a high flow like there has been in the past. So, maybe Wednesday? He has a doctor's appointment on Wednesday, so maybe Thursday, most likely it will be the day that we target for that. And I'm also going to look at pumping out the GSA meter pit so we can get the radio head, because we received that radio frequency device. So, we get that installed, we can start monitoring that. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Ian. Now, we have a three D correspondence.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure.
On the hut, are we any closer to getting that hut moved? The kids are all on vacation next week for the rink.
I have spoken with Carl Smith at Peterbilt, and he said we can use his trailer to move it.
Maybe we'll get to that this week, if by any chance?
Yeah, well, I'll talk to him again.
Hopefully we don't get any snowstorms. How do you know?
Yeah.
Because now that they've seen the signs, so many people say, oh, I didn't know there's a rink. So, is the hut coming? That's the biggest question. I know St. Mary's was going to try and go down and use the rink this week during their Winter Olympic events. Do we have any old benches we could put down there until we could get that moved? Because people come with their boots on and then have to put skates on.
No, the only benches would be the picnic tables, which are...
Across the street.
Yeah, they're cabled to the ground, so they're frozen. By Wednesday, they may not be, but it'd be definitely money to get out there.
Okay, correspondence. Determination from Judge Miguel relative to Article 78, Merce versus Village of Champlain Zoning Board of Appeals. Correspondence from New York State D.C. regarding renewal for patrolling both storage tanks. Letter to William Anderson regarding property maintenance at his property located at 93 Oak Street. Letter to Jacqueline Sherry regarding property maintenance complaint for the apartment located at 16 Seaver Street. Correspondence from Flint County Health Department regarding annual water quality report for the village and town of Champlain Water District. Correspondence from New York State Assembly regarding post-proposed 2009-2010 CHIPS budget allocations. Correspondence from ARC regarding payment and lieu of taxes. Correspondence from TAF Enterprises regarding their tool sale at the American Legion on February 17, 2009. Correspondence from New York State Department of Health regarding Terry Linkort's class D water license renewal. Correspondence from Flint County Health Department regarding state water sample scheduled report for 2009. Request for donation for 2009-2010 from Champlain Memorial Library. Correspondence from Big Safely, New York requesting village profile update. Correspondence from Town of Champlain requesting reimbursement for water sewer building error. Correspondence from Attorney Marshall regarding local law to prohibit outdoor wood boilers. Correspondence from New York State Department of Health regarding New York Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network notice regarding upcoming rabies clinic.
Okay, thanks, Juanita. We don't have anything new on the new business. We have one of these items that will be brought up under new business. So if no one else has any old business, I guess we'll proceed with new business.
Last...
Mr. Pedro's request on new business, new business, true?
We can do that under new business. I guess it's sort of old, isn't it?
Yes, unfortunately.
And we already took care of the GLC.
GLC, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we pay Chip Pritchett $1,095 for a sewer problem at 1141 Main Street, Village of Champlain. This has been an ongoing problem, and I think as the investigation has gone forward, that the village is, it is necessary for the village to pay that bill. I think it's necessary for the village to pay that bill.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried. I didn't have any other new business. Does someone else have some new business?
Yeah, I do. Request for $5,000 to be transferred to the Shared Services Committee for received money for the study.
Okay, we need to find some place to budget for that idea right there. I don't know, did we, yeah, I think we hit budget, was that one of the we spent? Yes, okay. I don't have, I don't know where that would come from at this point, but I guess...
It's in there.
Oh.
Do we need to call, I don't mind to call you though.
Is it A 1989.4?
You need the 1984?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's not, that's, that's...
That's shared services.
Yeah, that's not the 5,000 that we've already put in. This is what we budgeted.
No, this is what we budgeted this year.
The second time.
Is that what's from last year's budget? Okay, great.
We have money.
Our total is $10,000 for part of this.
Okay, do you like to make a motion?
Yes, so motion would be to transfer $5,000 from A 1989.4 for Shared Services Committee for funding of seed money.
Do you have a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried. Any other business?
Well, there was a flyer for the ALASTI Minor. If anyone is interested in doing any kind of volunteer work, they are reaching out to the community, I forgot to mention it in my report, I apologize, for a bunch of different roles, including interpreting the museum as collection for visitors, researching archives, assisting at special events, keeping the garden beautiful, caring for the collection, conducting research of the collection, and working with school groups to learn about the ALASTI Minor Museum and about our nation's past through study of the museum collection. So it covers lots of people, so if you have interest and you have hours and you're interested in helping out, it's a great organization to get involved with. They say just to contact them.
Is there someone that curates it? Is there someone that supports that museum?
I don't know. They, yeah, they have a director, Amanda Palmer is the director curator, yeah. I don't know how often she's there, you know, if it's every day or I don't know. I think it's regular times.
You're looking for that second curator, aren't you? I guess I, everybody talks long enough, that's something I forgot. I'd like to, that approval, it costs $17. I didn't get a chance to ask anybody if they wanted to go, so I'd like to at least have two people go to this, it's a legislative breakfast. I've been to these before. You get a little bit of airtime with Betty Little, Janet Dupree, and Teresa Seward. These things are excellent to go with. I know some people can't fit this in their schedule, but I really think a couple of those from the village should go because that's your time to lobby and it's very informal, so it's good. So I'd like to have a motion to send two people to this. This is February 27, Friday, February 27, 7:30 to 9:30. I haven't had a chance to ask anybody, but anybody, if you want to go, let me know. And if you don't, we can't find two people, we only have one, but I really think we should have a presence at all of these, if we have a chance.
7:30, 9:30?
It's a.m.
Where is it at?
Breakfast.
Where is that, Jeff?
If you could tell for it. It's, yeah. West Side Ballroom from formerly Murphy's, New York Road on Park, so I...
No, on the base.
Need the GPS to find that.
On the base. I probably can do that.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we send two people to this.
If somebody, if in addition wanted to go, we can send more.
Sure.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is carried. And, okay, that's it for new business. If there's no further new business, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moves.
All in favor, okay, we have a second from Greg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. New business adjourned.
Like, is this extra funding or something?
So we're actually going to get some...